All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 11th, 2021 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Before we go too further, I'd like to, first of all, congratulate Lear on winning a second term in a unanimous decision.
Long drive, fight.
And then welcome Seth, our new Board of Selectman, who's going to be joining us for the first time today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Being the first one, why don't you lead us in the Pledge Allegiance today?
The Pledge Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so nothing for citizens input. We're going to move on to COVID-19 update.
So I just have a brief update tonight. I didn't actually grab Matt's update today, but I will say that we were down to about 20 cases in town. I checked that at 4:00 this afternoon, so that's the latest update we have, which means that we're down about 1.7% overall, which is really good. We're heading in the right direction. And that, now, the numbers, the reopening plan did take effect on Monday yesterday, so the increase was to 25% in some of the bigger venues, restaurants, things that means they can move up in numbers. And so that was good news to be able to report to that. As we indicated at the last meeting, the governor has indicated that August 1st is the date in which he wants everything to be fully reopened, with, of course, you know, people using voluntary masks, et cetera, as they so choose. So far, that plan still seems to be good, but we, and so indications are that numbers are starting to improve a little quicker than they thought in many, many areas, not all areas across the state, though. There are some areas that are still lagging behind a little bit, and so as a result, I think they're going to try and, you know, maintain that schedule on August 1st at this point. He did say that if, in fact, the things, if the conditions improve, that he would, in fact, change that directive and move up, potentially move the date. So we're hoping that'll be the case. But at this point, that's the latest update I have.
What about travel, Bill, for out-of-state?
So out-of-state travel, we're no longer considered to be an at-risk community or at-risk state, so we can go from state to state. There aren't many places that have their restriction left in place now, so I think we're pretty much, I think all the Northeast states are safe at this point in time, so you can go across borders without any kind of restrictions in that respect.
Okay. What about coming back from Midwest or Kelvin?
It really depends on which state you're talking about.
I actually called the school about this recently because they just went away, and it's in advisory now.
Yeah.
So it's not like you're required.
Right.
Is your discretion?
Depends if you're vaccinated, and there's a lot of different scenarios.
Okay, got it.
There's a lot of different scenarios. But if you ever have any questions about that, feel free to call us, or we can certainly check with Matt or with Tom Kenvin, make sure we get you the latest information on that.
Great, thank you.
All right, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we do have a public meeting at 7:15, but we're going to move up some action items to fill the gap between now and then. First one is Normandy Farms. It's an approval of a one-day beer and malt license for Normandy Farms. And I believe I see Christine Daniels and Sharon. Want to tell us a little bit about your plan real quick? And can you hear us? No, we can't hear you, Sharon. Can't hear you. Check out mute.
She's still muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes, like, so what we'd like to do is invite a few local breweries into the park in an open field to display their craft beers for our guests only. It would be in an open field.
And what, do you have a date yet?
We do. It's June 5th, it's a Saturday, and it will be from 12:00 to 4:00.
Any questions from the board?
I actually didn't hear exactly. I couldn't hear very well. It sounds like Saturday, June 5th, 12:00 to 4:00, beer and wine. Is there anything else?
Some craft beer companies come in.
Okay.
And it's only for their guests. It's not going to be open to the public.
Got it, great.
And I saw, Chrissy, I think I saw everyone's tip certified. It's usually something else that we check on that was in the application, right?
That is correct. Yeah, everyone is tip certified, and we have some food trucks that are going to be present as well, so there'll be food in addition to the craft beer.
I'm sorry, say that last part again, Christine. There's going to be food associated?
Yes, we'll have some food trucks there as well, so there'll be food in addition to the craft beer.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with tips. Does that have to do with getting tipped out, or is that an acronym or something?
It's a training floor for servers, so that they follow the rules for a safe serving of alcohol.
Perfect.
Basically trained to serve alcohol.
Love it.
So Christine, are the company that is going to do it, are they also going to be the ones that are serving it? Or do you have, do you have some staff or some employees of Normandy Farms that are going to actually take the beer and serve it to people at tables, or how's that going to work?
Yep. So it'll be our staff that is serving it to folks at tables.
Okay.
Christine, would it be cash bar or tickets, or how's it going to work?
There'll be tickets. So they will purchase a ticket when they enter the event, and then that ticket would be redeemed towards whichever craft beer they chose to try.
Okay. How much are tickets?
I don't think we've figured out the pricing on it yet.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just, oh, sorry. No. The chairman, I just have one question. So Christine, is this only for the people who are staying at Normandy Farms? It's not for the general public, right?
That is correct, yes.
Great. There's no other questions?
Everybody's good? All right. Motion to approve a one-day beer and malt license for Normandy Farms Campground, LLC, DBA, Normandy Farms Campground, for Saturday, June 5th, 2021, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Oh, that's right. We don't have a second here.
Oh, that's right.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Great idea, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I'm going to do the next, well, we'll finish the action items step if you want to go through the other three.
Okay. Okay. Motion to approve a $2,000 donation from the Friends of Foxborough Recreation for summer program supplies.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve with gratitude, which I'm sorry, I didn't say with gratitude for the first one. I slipped up for a second, but motion to approve with gratitude the tuition reimbursement for Officer Joseph Gadino for $960, which I guess I didn't have to say with gratitude for that one, but anyhow.
He is grateful, though.
I'm sure he's grateful.
He is grateful, yeah. There's no question about that.
Second. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious why that is something that comes before the board.
So it's one of the few remaining things that is approved by the board for tuition reimbursement. I think we're actually changing that, right, as of July 1st?
Yes, so this will be the last meeting that that happens because that was negotiated out of this contract as one of the several things that the town wanted, that the town manager will now be approving those after the police chief, of course, as it goes with all other contracts.
Great.
And Seth, just so you know, instead of all the smaller donations and us having to read them all, it's over $200?
$100.
Over $100. Anything under $100, Bill will approve and then just let us know that he's done.
Okay.
Instead of having to, just so you know.
Couple of those on here tonight, so I'll actually see that tonight, so.
So if it's over $100, it has to be?
We do it.
And we actually sign a piece of paper, too.
Oh, okay. All right, great.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi. Motion to approve the March 5th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four and one abstain.
Motion to approve the March 16th, 2021 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Four, oh, and one again, Christina. Okay, got that done, can't do the last one yet.
Yep.
We still got about five minutes before the public hearing, so let's, do you have about five minutes worth, Mike?
I don't. I have just a couple of minutes worth, but I'm happy to go.
Yeah, please do.
Might be able to cover the other three.
Okay.
Sure. So you're all in the process of finishing up the town manager's goals for those of you, or his evaluation, excuse me, for those of you that haven't already turned them in, and for the public's knowledge, those will be coming in to the executive assistant Katie Lang and HR specialist Sarah Ackerman, and who will then be getting together with Chairman Elfman to put together the composite evaluation, which will then be debriefed at your May 25th meeting. That's one thing that I have.
And Mike, those should be all turned in by Wednesday or Thursday morning?
By Thursday morning, it'd be fine.
Thursday morning?
Yep. And then the follow-on to that is in June, the setting of the new goals for the upcoming year. So, and I know this was mentioned before, but former Selectman Mitchell is involved in this evaluation, and then newly elected Selectman Ferguson is involved in the goal setting, setting in June for this upcoming year. So we look forward to, you know, to that. And one other thing, I guess, is that in June, Bill and I will be coming before you along with our community information specialist with a vision and mission statement proposals for you to consider for our strategic communication plan. So a number of strategic things for you to look at coming up in June, and that's all I have.
For that, if you don't mind, for that strategic plan, are we doing the mission and vision first, or you, is there a plan already developed? Just kind of walk me through the timeline for that.
Sure. So we wanted to start actually with the vision, propose something to you, and we've also enveloped a mission underneath that, again, as a draft, and then, you know, before we started building a large plan, we wanted to make sure that we're heading in the direction that the board desires. And this would be a plan that involves communication within boards and committees, from employees to and from boards and committees, from employees as well as boards, committees, and commissions to the residents, as well as inside the organization, you know, within the employee organization. So, but we want to really, before we start, you know, putting any meat on the bones, or even, you know, putting a stamp on that vision and mission, we want to make sure we're headed in the direction that the board desires for the residents.
Come to the leaders?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Seth, just as a little side note, so we have a public notice at 7:15, so we have to do that right at 7:15.
Gotcha.
Because it was ahead of time, posted, whole nine yards. So sometimes, at my discretion or the chair's discretion, we can fill in those gaps with things that are usually later in the agenda that aren't as time-sensitive.
So something that, so what we had at 7:15, Bar Louie item, that is locked in, but there's other items that are flexible?
Move up, move down. And because we knew we had a little bit of a gap, we let Normandy Farms know ahead of time that they could, you know, Christina and I talked about that, that Christina said, you know, there'll be a gap, let's get Normandy Farms up there earlier. So they don't have to sit around and wait and have no idea really when they're going to come before us, so.
Got it.
Just a little.
What happens if we're, what happens if it's 7:15 and it's 7:30? Has had a problem?
Oh, we stop whoever's talking and go right into the 7:15.
Literally, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's a time sensitive.
Then I better shoot.
And we're right at 7:15, so Bill, you'll have to wait.
Oh, that's right, that's fine.
Afterwards, and Steph, you're up.
Okay.
Well, this one.
Thank you, Doc. The Board of Selecting, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, beginning at 7:15 p.m. in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass. Meeting being held virtually, instructions to be, do I have to read that part? Instructions to be provided when Board of Selectmen meeting agenda is posted. On the application of a transfer of license of an on-premises annual all-alcohol beverage license from BL Restaurant Operations LLC, DBA, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., manager William C. Cochrane, Jr., to BLH Acquisition Company LLC, DBA, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, 232 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., manager William C. Cochrane, Jr., all party, all interested parties are welcome to attend.
All right, so I think we have the two interested parties. Gentlemen, want to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what the transfer is?
If I may, Mr. Chair, my name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney and partner at Upton Canal Devlin with offices in Boston and Newburyport, and I represent Bar Louie. I represented Bar Louie prior to their bankruptcy.
Jack, Jack, can I put you on hold for just a second? Is there any way, yeah.
Can you boost the sound, please?
We can't hear you very well, so we're going to check internally if we can boost the sound. All right, yep, let's give it a go again, Jack, thank you.
Let's try again, yeah. My son was messing around with my computer, I think it's actually Joe, his name is Jack, though, so can you hear me now?
But go ahead, yeah, we can hear you better now.
Okay, great. So I represent Bar Louie, I represented him before the bankruptcy, and I represent him now. With me is Bill Cochrane, who is the general manager. He's been at the Bar Louie in Foxborough since 2015. A little bit before that, he was with the Bar Louie in Boston, but he was also the GM of, in Foxborough, prior to that as well, so he's been in the community for a while. Also with us is Ian Welby, he's the regional manager. He's been the regional manager of this area for the last couple of years and has been with the company for a considerable amount of time, too. I think Bill hasn't beat, he's been with Bar Louie since 2002. We're here today because Bar Louie, the prior owner, went into bankruptcy. As a result of the bankruptcy, they had a reorganization that was sanctioned by the bankruptcy court and approved by the bankruptcy court, wherein the prior company's biggest creditors, which are their lenders, bought them out of bankruptcy. And the reorganization allowed the restaurant to continue operations. This happened in the middle of the pandemic, and it was a direct result of the pandemic. Most of the executives and management staff are remaining the same, none of the employees are changing as a result of this. Essentially, you have a new upper layer of these lenders and, you know, but it's basically being run the same. There'll be no changes in the operations or the menu. The Thomas Frick, who's the CEO prior to the bankruptcy, is still the CEO. The purchase price for this was a total of about $83.5 million, but $82.5 million of it was just the lenders forgiving their debt in bankruptcy. They had to pay about $1 million in cure to cure defaults on leases and with state taxing authorities and other municipal and state charges like that. This affected 50 locations in 22 states. They did have to close the Boston location, and that is not reopening. But bottom line, the staff is the same, their training's the same, their, you know, and Bill is well-versed with what the requirements here in Foxborough are, and he's committed to continuing that. We're here to answer any questions we might have, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Pretty much just a paper shuffle?
Hey, well, yes.
More than anything, you know, especially with the manager of record being the same. But any other questions from the board?
I have one. Have they had any violations in the prior year up at Patriot Place at the Bar Louie's that you might be aware of?
Not to my knowledge.
I did, it's Katie Lang, the executive assistant. I did check with the AVCC, and there were no filings, Ed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This is an open public meeting. Any questions from the public? I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Do you want me to say?
You can say move to.
Yeah. Motion, move to close the public hearing.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right.
It's to be, yeah, who's second, guy?
Yeah.
All right. Motion to approve the transfer of an on-premises annual all-alcohol beverage license from BL Restaurant Operations LLC, DBA, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, to BLH Acquisition Company LLC, DBA, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, with manager William C. Cochrane, Jr., remaining as manager of record.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the transfer of a common vic and seven-day entertainment license from BL Restaurant Operations LLC, DBA, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, to BLH Acquisition Company LLC, DBA, Bar Louie Tavern and Grill, with manager William C. Cochrane, Jr., remaining as manager of record.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Great. Thank you very much for joining us today.
Hey, thank you very much.
All your transfers go this easy.
I'm famous for my nothing is changing transactions you'll see with some other chains that I run. I'll see you all again soon. Bye-bye now.
Bye-bye now.
See you, Bill.
Bye. All right, next on the agenda is the extension of appointments. Bill, you want to explain what we're doing here?
Yeah, so what we have here is that we're trying to get our hands, our wraparounds around the appointment process and the records that we've been trying to maintain here. We know that there are a couple of things we have to do better at and do a better job at, so what we've talked, and Leah's sort of been taking point on this and working with Christine and myself and rest of the staff members in our office to try and figure this out. We're still not 100% there yet, and I know we've got on here the possibility of extending it to June 1st, but we think we might be better to go to June 15th. Give us an extra two weeks just to make sure we've covered every, all the bases and make sure that the process is aligned with what we want to try and get to. I spoke with Leah before the meeting tonight, and I said we want to take a little bit more time and just make sure that we sit down, have the process set up the way we want to do it, and make sure everybody's aligned for that, so we can get it straightened out. But we do need to at least extend the appointments of those that expire on May 1st to at least June 15th, so that we can at least maintain their position, so they don't, if they take any actions at any meetings, it's all legal, so we don't run into any issues of that way.
And the thought behind is the fact that, you know, May 1st is just too busy a time of the year.
Well, yeah, and I think, you know, and nobody really knows, I mean, there probably is somebody out there who knows why May 1st was chosen, but I haven't come across that person yet, so it doesn't mean that, you know, there's not reasoning behind it, but at least from what we can see, it may be better for us to extend it into June or, you know, June, the middle of June, so that we start the fiscal year with a clear slate of appointments, so it's consistent with July 1. So we've thought about that, but, you know, that's something we can discuss, and certainly the board, if the board, that's the board's decision as to how you want to make that happen, so.
So it's really two-part. You know, like Bill said, we have a little bit of work to do to go through the boards and committees. So if you are on a board or committee, you'll probably hear from us. And then the second part is, you know, historically, all the boards and committees have been May 1st, and we know that there are some that by bylaw or statute will remain May 1st and maybe October 1st for the cultural council. You know, we know and realize, and we'll look into ones that are other dates for reasons, you know, that need to stay. But the biggest shuffle is during May. So, you know, we get all the boards and committees, and then, you know, school committee has some turnover, and planning board has turnover, and we do, and people are going to be appointed to different boards, so we thought as a whole, it makes sense going forward, you know, to look and discuss a June 1st date rather than a May 1st date for those that are within our control to be able to move.
In that way, you're through-town meeting, you've done all the major legislative actions for the town, and most of the business is decided at that point, you know, the budget's done, you know, all the big heavy lifting's been done for the year. So it's a good time to at least make a transition at that point in time if people are so, are interested in leaving a board or coming on to a board.
So the only thing I would just, we don't have a meeting on the 15th. We have a meeting on the 8th and the 22nd.
Okay.
So.
So which would you prefer, the 22nd or the 8th?
I don't know. What does the board think? I mean, we're already extending it a little bit. Do we think we can accomplish everything we need to?
Well, that's the question. Do you think, sort it back to you, would you need the 8th?
If you went to the 22nd, you'd give it plenty of time, and then there really would be no reason to not have it completed by then.
I personally feel like a month will give us a more realistic timeframe, you know, timeframe to get our arms around what we need to, because, you know, there's obviously still other things going on.
Right.
So as long as everyone's comfortable with that, I know it does push it a little bit more, but I would recommend June 22nd.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
I am as well.
Yep. So can I ask a question? Is the disconnect, like, so when I was looking through the town book, so like, I see people that have been off boards for, you know, five years. I noticed Seth and I were still on AdCom, and I think, I think probably because, you know, I was, we were both still on AdCom for part of 2020.
Part of the year, that's right.
So, yeah, so, but like, I saw Larry Stern was still on there, and he had been gone for like two years.
But Larry did come back on for a brief period of time, I think in 19 to 20, so it may be because he was actually, he was on, then he stepped off again.
I think it was the first half of the 2019.
I mean, the bottom line is, is we have work to do. So if you see something that doesn't look right, that's kind of why we're really digging into this.
Yeah, and it's like, there are a couple of databases that are aligned with each other, so we want to try and fix that.
Okay.
All right, so that's the reason why.
So basically, you're trying to reach out to maybe chairs and say, can you give me an updated list?
We're going to talk, we're going to reach out.
I think we need to work through what that process looks like, yeah.
Yeah, I remember you brought that to us.
Last year.
Very shortly, I think after I came on the board, I remember you, we had dates and, you know, and some, we were trying to, you know, I know you were working on that for quite some time.
Yeah, so I think that will give us enough time to kind of.
Yeah, figure it out.
Kind of, you know, just step back, look at everything, make sure it's accurate, and then it will be an easier process going forward.
A lot of bumps in the road now, but like, yeah.
Yeah, we think we can figure it out. I don't, I'm confident we have the right ability to do it. I think we'll get it done. I think we just want to, and also, we want to have the ability to make sure that we have good checks and balances in place to make sure, so that we don't provide information that's not accurate. It is a little confusing, because, don't forget, when you build an annual report, it's for all the activity that occurred during that whole calendar year. And we think in fiscal year terms many times, not calendar year terms. So, but despite that, there are still some mistakes, we know that.
Yeah. So the annual book does go calendar year.
It does go calendar year. It's a calendar year book, so that's why you might see, hey, wait a minute, that person got off in July or June, yeah, but they did serve in, during the calendar year, so that's what it's.
The other thing I would note is if you're on this list, I wouldn't anticipate you'll get a letter for your one-month kind of interim appointment, you'll get it once we do the appointments in June. So just so everyone who may be up for an appointment, that just know what to expect, you know, going forward.
Exactly.
Any other questions? We'll just change that stuff to the 22nd.
To the 22nd, yeah, so I would encourage you to approve it through the, from effective May 1st through June 22nd.
And there are, sorry, I just looked at this late. And there are, sorry, I just looked at this late, there are a couple of dates that are wrong on here, so some of them are listed as, I think that the dates just flopped Christina, so instead of 5-1, it's 1-5. So the document.
Yeah, because one of them says January 5th, I think.
Two of them, a couple of them do, so if we can just, for the one that we, the one that we save as the, you know, record, if we can just get that updated.
Well, I see one, yeah.
Yeah, there's two of them that have January 5th.
Boy, looking down through those numbers, I never would have.
I did, I did see one, but I didn't know if that was because there was a certain person that got appointed that day and that was their.
I think Excel just will flip flop the formatting sometimes.
Okay.
All right, Steph.
Okay. Motion to extend all board committee appointments that expired May 1st, 2021 to expire June 22nd, 2021.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Awesome, great, thank you.
All right. Public event application, farmer's market, we're excited, come tell us all the good news.
Farmer's market is back. That was the reason for the T-shirt tonight. That's what I'm saying, well, I said she just came from the gym or something, now she got the T-shirt on.
Trying to find a nice way to tell me I didn't look very good.
I did not mean that, I did not mean that.
You don't like our matching outfits?
No, I do.
That'll be nice.
That's great.
Leah and Seth, congratulations.
Thank you, Deb.
We're here tonight to ask for your support in our third annual farmer's market. When I say our, I mean, it's run by the rec department with the support of the recreation committee. If you have your paperwork in front of you, it's Thursdays, 4 to 7 on the Carmen, it starts May 27th and runs through September 2nd. We have nine confirmed vendors, we still have three or four that are looking at us and we're looking at them and we hope that they join us. What, what you don't know and what you don't see on that application is our farmer's market manager Renee Tochi has worked very hard again this year in one of our additional events where there will be some sort of child oriented event at each farmer's market, whether it be a painting night, there is.
Moms Club Fun Night.
Moms Club Night, where are they?
Oh, DJ, I got him here, DJ, petting zoo, oh, straw hat night.
Straw Hat Night, very big.
We'll expect you all there.
So we're looking forward to another successful year with the vendors. It adds a lot to the Carmen, those of you who have been there, I think you know that it's a fun atmosphere and it adds a lot when you have the farmer's market followed by the J.C.'s Carmen, J.C.'s concerts. When we, when we have the farmer's market, we will often be up there every night, all night, because we find it such a good social event and some good PR for recreation as well. So that's it, we'd like your support, we'd like your attendance, we'd like you to come and help and check it out, but I guess your support will start with.
Any questions from the board?
I have, I don't see, and I didn't look at this before because I know it came late and I was kind of focused on the appointees, but the police and fire, did they weigh, weigh in?
They did, it should be in the, signed up in the packet.
Yep, so their signatures are here.
Oh, there's no like email from them or whatever, they just sign it.
They just sign off, yeah.
Okay.
And then also Leah, it's Katie, apologies, Matt also reviewed the application, we're going to add Board of Health to our public event applications because we feel should someone be serving food, Board of Health needs to be in the loop. And then also in that packet, I'm giving Renee and Debbie just guidelines for outdoor activities that was given to me by Matt as well.
Thank you Katie, we have those, but I'll take another copy.
Oh, of course, yeah, I can send everything tomorrow morning as well, just as like a final approval should the board have a positive vote.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, just very excited because I know a lot of people last year were disappointed.
I know.
Because I think we all thought, okay, here's the pandemic and it'll be a couple of months and everything will bounce back.
We were very disappointed, but we will be, that's a good point too, we will be following COVID regulations, as Katie said, there's a set for outdoor events, there's a set for mobile vendors, still the separation issues, so we will be following all of those.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Good, very exciting.
Seth, you had a question?
Yeah, so I, I think it's awesome and I'm, I support it, you know, generally, I'm just, for due diligence, is there any risks or is there any liabilities that we need to consider? I mean, in the past, has there been any issues with, I don't know, traffic pockets, I don't know, I'm just making stuff up, but I don't know, you know what I mean, just like. Do we have any additional liability insurance or anything like that, or is it just?
As of all, well, they're covered, because they're, it's a town event, so because it's a town sponsored event, so it's covered under our policies.
Okay. And that's, this is covered without any. Okay.
The only problem I saw is eating way too many cookies.
That's dangerous on all ages.
Is she coming back?
I don't think she's doing the cookies.
We do have a different.
We have a biscotti. Biscotti makeup.
I know.
Biscottis.
Oh, biscotti too.
Yeah. And we're going to try to also partner, we're not sure how to work it out, but with the community farm stand, because they're going to try to open on a limited basis, maybe like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so I reached out to Michelle and said, you know, maybe we can find a way to work together so that they could bring some produce up to the Carmen and we might be looking for volunteers, if anybody out there, you know, to like man a table, like even if they can just get us the stuff, but we can, you know, sell it for them, when it's gone, it's gone, it'll help them out on a night when they're not open and it's, you know, another vendor uptown, so we're going to try to pull that off.
Great.
Really, the, the two years prior, you guys didn't really run into much.
We had no problems.
We had no problems, no. One main night.
I was going to say, just the weather.
We ran into problems with the electrical, but we're, we're going to, we're making do and we're getting past that, we're going to be all set moving forward, so.
Yeah, we will have the Carmen redesign, so keep us posted.
Oh, right.
On how that is.
We will.
Be pretty new, so maybe we can get some police presence up there, at least for the first one, people are getting used to it.
There'll be, there'll be police presence anyway, they can keep an eye on it just while during that process.
But feedback the other way too, if, you know.
How it's working.
I'm sure Heather will speak up and let us know.
I will.
Mr. Chairman, just, so Deb, you mentioned straw hat night, was that something that came out of our conversation that time?
Actually, it's, it's developed from the J.C.'s.
Oh, good.
Coincidentally with our conversation.
Yeah.
From what I understand, and anyone can correct me, is the night, the first night of the concerts, the first night of this concert series, they will be having a straw hat night celebration and contest.
So why don't you tell people why, why straw hats are so important to Foxborough?
I'm sorry?
Why don't you tell people why straw hats are so important to Foxborough?
Straw hats, Foxborough is the founding center of straw hats.
A straw hat capital of the world.
Roots are in straw hats.
Straw is.
Yeah. Straw hat capital of the world.
Good example, yeah.
At one time, we were, so interesting.
So we'll celebrate straw hats.
We'll get Jack O'Leary up there that night.
Yeah, we'll stick a hat on his head and he'll be all set.
Take good pictures, because that'll be a good picture for the, for the, for the annual report next year.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. Yeah, Steph?
Motion to approve the farmer's market on the Carmen sponsored by Foxborough Recreation to be held on Thursday starting May 27th, 2021 through September 2nd, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, great, great to hear.
Thank you very much. Hope to see you there.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, Bill, town managers update?
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, so first of all, just want to say thanks to everybody for town meeting last night and those who attended and I thought it was actually a relatively smooth night and appreciate everybody coming to support the efforts that have been put forward for the past six, seven months and I think, I think there's really, we don't talk about that enough, but how much effort goes into preparing for that meeting, it takes a good, we start in November effectively to prepare for that meeting and then it culminates in that one meeting in, in May, with the prospect that we may have another one in the fall, so we don't know that answer yet, but we certainly have the, we plan on that just in case. The one reason why we, we have to consider that is that we don't have the final state aid numbers yet, we are, we are one step closer, which I'll get into that in a second, but it's just important to remind people that it's sort of like a yearly ongoing process, so it doesn't just, it begins, it starts with an approval process, but then the budget doesn't begin until July 1st and then it starts from there and then the, then the next year's fiscal year cycle again rolls over to November where we talk, we start talking about the next fiscal year. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty long and deliberative process for a reason, because a lot of, a lot goes in, a lot of discussion goes into that, so what you see at the town meeting always is really sort of a culmination of a lot of those thoughts and discussions and debates that occur prior to that, that one night, so I think unfortunately, there's an impression sometimes that folks think that that, this is the only time we discuss this stuff and it's really not, it's really the culmination of that discussion occurs on that, that evening, so we want to say thank you though for everybody coming out and supporting the efforts and getting through the meeting in relatively good time, about two, two hours and, two, two hours and 45 minutes or so, we got through it, so, so it was a good night to get that done. The second thing I wanted to mention is that we, we did receive a letter from Norfolk County, County Commission, the board recalled that at the last meeting I gave a presentation about our concern about how the money is coming from the federal government, it's going to go through Norfolk County. We did receive a letter just yesterday, as a matter of fact, indicating that the, that the, the county commissioners are willing to work with us to try and get to a point where, you know, that money will flow back into the, into the town. Foxborough is due to receive somewhere in the order of about $3.5 million, which will come in two payments, one will be 1.75 one year and then through the, by the end of this fiscal year and another 1.75 next fiscal year. So we will, and then that, on top of the 1.8 million dollars that we received directly from the federal government, so another 900,000 this year, another 900,000 next year, and from what I'm told is that that money is starting to flow into the state, the money's going to go to this, from the, from the, from the federal government to the state and then come back to the town in June, so we'll start seeing those checks show up sometime in June of, of next year, of this year, actually, so we don't know, still don't have the details of the, of the county situation, but the fact that they are acknowledging that it's really important for us to get the money back directly is, is a good indication that they are, they're at least listening and they're paying attention to that, so that's, that's a good sign. I did receive the, the, the OP regulations as of yesterday that came from the United States Treasury that was issued to all the cities and towns throughout the country. We did, I passed those on to George and Marie and they're, they're sort of digging through that right now to see how this, we can actually spend the money once we receive it. So that's something that we're working on as we currently, currently speak, we do have those regulations, it's, if anybody's interested, it's about 150 pages worth of, worth of regulation to read through, so it's, it's not, it's, it's actually, it's a little casual reading to anybody who wants to see it, so, but.
OP is the name of the.
Yes, the American Rescue Plan, that's the, that's the, that's the actual acronym for it.
Yeah, thank you.
So that's, so that's where we stand on that and it's, it's good news that we, you know, are really moving in the right direction in, on that piece. Just, I just wanted to give the board an update that, you know, I was curious to see where we are revenue wise and how revenues are coming in this year and I'm pleased to report that last year at this point in time, we were 88% collected in terms of, in terms of our general fund goal, right now we're 92.5% collected, so that's, so we're actually moving ahead, we are still on the lower end of where we want to be for, for meals tax and hotel motel, but we expected that was going to come in low, so we, so we've anticipated that, but what's interesting to note is that the actual real estate taxes are actually doing quite well, we're at 98.5% collected on that, which is, which is really extraordinary to me, so I'm glad to hear, and we actually surpassed our goal in terms of motor vehicle excise, so we, we've actually gone over that, we're about 107% collected, so that's good news in terms of that revenue side. We still do one more payment from the state in terms of state aid, so I expect that it will come in, don't anticipate any issues with that, I also think that, there's also some additional motor vehicle excise going to come in and, and regular taxes are still flowing in as well, so there are some people that pay them a little bit late, but generally speaking, it's great to see that we've had that much collection at this point in time, so I remain optimistic we'll do okay to finish out the year, so let's see how that plays out. We did receive the payment from the Patriots too, by the way, so in case I was asked wondering about that, they did pay us at the end of April as, as planned, so there was no surprises there either, so, okay.
What is the, there's, Bill, is it 1.5?
It's 1.5, but actually, it came in about, like 1.25, the reason why is because there was actually a payment to the stadium that made, the stadium made, it's actually on a calendar year basis and they made, they had a football game last year and then that gets deducted off the top, so that was about $150,000 and there was a couple other small items that, that were taken off of that, so, but it was, it was, the number was right, there was no issue about the number.
The guarantee for us is 1.5?
1, well, it's, yes, the one number was around 1.5 and so we, so we made that number, so based upon the calculation, so there was no issue there.
All right, I just had a couple of other quick questions, so as like, as these monies are coming in, some of them are, based on the timing of everything.
Yeah.
Were we, as we were leaving 2019 budget year.
Yeah.
Were we in okay shape?
2020, I mean, 2020 fiscal year.
2020, yeah, I'm sorry, 2020. As we were leaving 2020, you know, with things shutting down like in March, close to the end of our fiscal year, so we finished the year fine?
Yeah.
Or any of that money, is that money earmarked to help out, were we short anywhere?
Well, we, we actually came in pretty well, we, of course, we ended the year with a positive free cash position, so that obviously, we did well, did fine, but we just saw a little bit of a drop off on the local receipt side because things started to shut down in May and June, April, May and June.
Yeah.
So we did see a little bit of a drop off on the hotel and motel and on the, on the meals tax side. We obviously didn't see much happening at Gillette either, normally they would have, they would, soccer starts using in March, so they, they were running in, right into, you know, a problem right in March with doing that, so we didn't see many events and obviously that's showing up, but I'm optimistic that fiscal year 2022 will actually be clearly better than, than it was, than fiscal year 2021 in that regard, because we're going to see, football will be back, we will see, the soccer, soccer is already back, the numbers are starting to come up based upon the guidance from, from the state, and then also there's even some time that we may see some concerts in the fall as well. So we, no guarantees yet, but, but there, there's been quite a bit of discussion and about, or has there been some planning for that, that's a good news and that's, so, until those announcements are made, we can't say for certain, but, but it's, we're hearing some positive, positive indications.
And don't forget about professional lacrosse too.
Yes, professional, thank you for asserting that, yeah, for lacrosse and, and also we're going to see the Jurassic Park experience, remember we did that last year, that's coming back, we think, and you'll be seeing an application for that in June, so we'll see that in July again, so.
So when you say we're going to get some funds this year and the next year.
Yeah.
Are you talking about like fiscal year or, or calendar year, so in other words, like any shortfall, we might still be going into 23 budget, is that what you mean, or do you mean, will it all be really for 22?
So, so let me just explain that, so, so it's based on a fiscal year, so we will get a payment in fiscal year 2021.
Okay.
Fiscal, in a payment in fiscal 2022.
Okay.
And then we have until fiscal 2024 to actually spend it all.
Oh, okay.
So we've got a little, little bit of leeway.
Might be short, we'll have that leeway to.
Exactly.
And the last question I had was kind of based on last night, so, I mean, obviously I know we're, we're not, we didn't fund the OPEB last year and, and this year, now what are we doing with the meals tax? So I, I think when the gentleman asked, I didn't, I didn't really think, because I guess I assumed that we're always doing roadwork or, you know, you know, so I, I knew the OPEB, wasn't going to OPEB, because we didn't fund it, but, so, but then I thought I heard you say that none of it went to roadwork, so does that money sit?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't applied the money yet and the We haven't applied the money yet, and the reason I say that is because we didn't put, we still got $623,000 we get from the state. So the question is how much are we going to supplement that with some meals tax? And we don't know what that number is going to be at this point. And the reason why is because we don't know how much we're going to collect.
Yeah, and I'm guessing none of that money could be used for funding the OPEB, correct?
Well, we could, actually.
Oh, maybe, okay.
So there's two things, there's two pieces to that.
Two pieces.
Yeah, so one of them is to fund the roads, the other one is to fund OPEB. Now, if in fact, we end up with money from both, both the county and from the federal government, both payments, we could be looking at a way to maybe possibly make an OPEB payment again this year. So we just haven't committed to it in this budget?
Because you have to see how everything else.
Because we want to see how it plays out. So, but I do think the good news is that, as I announced last night, we picked up $2.5 million or $2.2 million in terms of our investment earnings, which more than covered what we would have paid anyways. So for both last year, the last fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. So if we pay anything more, we're going to be ahead of the game, which is good news.
So the money, and I know the meals tax is probably not even close to what we're normally. But what we did collect, is that sitting in some type of reserve fund? Or, I mean, because I thought, that's why it was a little unclear. Because I thought that had, that money had was voted at town meeting, was earmarked for.
It's earmarked for that purpose.
For OPEB or roads.
So the way that works, we set money aside for that purpose, but I'm going to have to look and see how that is actually done. Because I know we set that money aside, and we don't, we clearly didn't collect enough to do anything with it this year. I mean, it was like, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we just didn't do anything with it.
But shouldn't that be sitting somewhere? I mean, I?
I don't know if we've actually set up so we earmark it, so we set it into a count. That's the, I don't understand.
Oh, okay. Because I, last time when he brought it up, I was under the impression that it was voted at town meeting when they passed it, that's the only thing that those funds can be used to pay. So if we're not using them for either one, I'm just wondering, are they in some type of, you know, like are they earmarked for a fund? Or would we, if we needed to spend them on something else, would we have to go back to town meeting and ask permission?
So more than likely, more than likely what happens is if we didn't spend it, it would fall to free cash. You follow me? So it would end in an account at the end of the year, and we'd just roll it out.
That is general fund in effect, so it's.
But I think it was voted at town meeting that that money could only be used for roads or OPEB.
That was my understanding too.
Yeah, so I don't think we can use them.
But the question is, if it's not used for either one of those, it can't be used for anything else, but it can roll into free cash, is what we have to check out.
That's right, yeah, that's probably what's going to happen, more than likely. Because we're not going to be in a position to do anything with it until we decide how much we can put into it towards those expenses.
But I mean, if it rolls into free cash, doesn't it still have to be earmarked?
At that point, no. So it feels a little bit like loophole-ish, where we could just decide not to do roads and bridges or roads.
I think if it was voted that it's the only thing can be spent on, I think, then it's got to be earmarked. Like, I don't think you can just roll into free cash, because if you roll into free cash, it's going to be spent on something else.
I think we have to find that out.
I think we have to find it out, but it's a fair question. But at the end of the day, we're not saying, we still are spending money on roads. We did the past year. And so we're not not spending money on roads. The point is that, the tricky part is determining which piece of that is falling into that. So that's, it's more complicated than you think it is to actually say that. So I understand.
And if there is a loophole, there is, but I would just be, the fact that it was voted at town meeting, that's all that money is supposed to be used for. I think we better make sure that it's not just going into free cash. I mean, I get it, we're always going to spend on roads. But I think, you know, I think then whatever money is brought in, just like say it was $200,000. I would say that that $200,000 needs to be spent on roads or OPEB.
Well, more than likely what I'm saying to you, Stephanie, is that it probably will be. Because we're going to look at the situation in the fall where we'd like to spend money on those items. All right, so then the question is, which pool of money does it come from, you know? So that's, it's not as black and white as you're saying it is. And I said, because at the end of the day, the goal is to try and make sure that we make contributions, and I know that's what the town's intention was, to make sure we make contributions to both those things, which we've consistently done.
But also, so I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but maybe I am. But the thing is, that meals tax came before the town.
I understand.
No, no, we'll look into that.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
So this is an action item, a takeaway to confirm the usage of the meals tax.
Yeah, I mean, it took a lot, three times before the town would vote for it, and they would only vote for it if it was earmarked for certain things. So you just don't want to, we don't want anyone coming back later. Like, I think that's what the guy was asking last night.
He thinks so.
And so, yeah, I just want to make sure we're, you know, we're following, you know. Like I said, it took a lot for the meals tax to get passed to begin with. And so, you know, there was a reason why that was brought up, so I just want to make sure we're following.
So we can go back and just check the language out to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know that, you know, we've made those consistent investments every year when we've collected. But we didn't, we decided not to do that because we knew we weren't going to collect it, and we did. We really, it's been low, numbers have been really low.
Okay.
All right. So then finally, the last thing I wanted to mention too is that we have, a couple of things I want to just mention is that we have Senate Ways and Means, which is the state budget, actually passed their version. It has made recommendations for this full senate, and they'll be acting on the budget, the state budget in the next month and to try and get that wrapped up. And then it goes to both, then the senate acts, and then you have the two versions, which is the House and the senate version. Then it goes to conference committee, and then it goes, and then they come up with a budget resolution that is sort of the compromise bill. Then it goes back to the governor, and the governor still has the ability to make final changes to it. And if that, if everybody agrees on it, then it's fine. If they don't agree on it, then it goes back to a full, to a debate between the two houses to come up with who's going to outvote the senate, go for the governor's proposal. So we'll see how that plays out. They all try to get that done, that, all that process done by June 30th. So that's the goal. Sometimes it doesn't get there. In fact, I've seen it as late as October, when the final number gets figured out. I think that was last year, October, November. So I hope that's not going to be the case this year. I don't anticipate that the case, but we'll certainly have to keep an eye on it. And then finally.
So the implications of that bill are just state aid, is that what?
Yeah, it's just state aid. So what's the final number going to be for state aid? And we'll have to figure out and wait and see where that final number comes in. I did have a call in to Senator Feeney about that this afternoon, and we'll have to wait and see what comes out of that. And then, then the other one was, I did sign the contract for the AT&amp;T Tower thing. I said it was approved last night, I signed that this afternoon. So that's on its way, and we'll see how that proceeds from there. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? No, Mr. Egan, okay. Selectmen's update under new business. We all got potentially three different versions of our upcoming calendar. Just right from the beginning, any of the asterisks about the Jewish holidays, none will affect us one way or the other. All right, so just, I'll just make sure on the second night of Hanukkah that I get the candles lit before I come over.
Perfect.
But any thoughts on which, you know, we're trying to, we always, last couple of years, try to be thoughtful of Thanksgiving and Christmas and people's times around the holidays.
No, and I think, you know, too, I mean, now that we can zoom in, it's, you know, it makes it that much easier that if there is a certain meeting that somebody can't, you know, can't be here physically, and, you know, and if there's some important stuff that we need, we can zoom in.
So that brings up a good point, Bill, and maybe we, is Zoom only an executive order from the governor? Because I know at one point, the board years ago tried to allow people to call in and zoom in.
Now, what is a requirement, what's, the wave during COVID was the requirement that the town had to adopt a policy to do that. And then the governor waived that requirement so that we didn't have to develop a policy. So the board would actually have to adopt the statute or the provision of the open meeting law that allows you to do that kind of a meeting. So right now, that's been relaxed because of COVID, but you have the ability, so you would have to adopt the policy or adopt the provision.
To allow board members to zoom in.
To zoom in. So I think, personally, I think it's a good way to go. I think you should.
100%.
Absolutely, I agree, but I thought, I just wanted to make sure that we do it correctly and that if somewhere down the road, the executive order is lifted, I don't want to be, you know, anybody to be caught in with, now I can't zoom in anymore. So Mike, what do you think? Did it come up with a policy to allow it?
Yeah, actually, it already exists.
Oh, it does?
Yes, but what has to happen, just as Bill mentioned, is this board, the Board of Selectmen, have to vote to adopt that. You know, the legislation already exists. And then other boards and committees and commissions can then do it, but they cannot do it until this board adopts it for the town.
So you think it would be a good idea to put it on our agenda next meeting to get it done?
It's interesting, because when we rolled into COVID, there was a lot of direction and guidance on how we could do it. I suspect we're going to have guidance, direction, how to roll out of it. And so it'll be interesting to see, the state legislature may just waive it all, may waive that requirement altogether because of what they've seen. So I think we just wait and see at this point. And if you need to, you can always act on it. You have that ability to do that.
But it's something the board could do as a policy.
Yeah, I would almost rather adopt it, though. It's written, it's done. Most towns around us or other towns had it. I feel like instead of forgetting to do it or, you know, something ends, I would almost rather adopt it.
I kind of agree with Leah, just get it done so it's there.
Do I feel like years ago, wasn't when Larry Haverington didn't have to travel a lot for business and out of the country? And I think maybe that's when it was becoming an issue. Maybe it's, you know, we all know, if you decide to run for this board, it's a responsibility and, you know. I, you guys know, I would prefer to be here in person, but it would be nice in case, like, you know, I'm gone for, you know, almost three weeks in April usually. And, you know, it all depends. It may just work out that I only miss one meeting. But still, if I could zoom in, like, you know, I didn't mind taking the time out of my vacation to zoom in. And if it's not a pertinent meeting and somebody says, just, I can't be here, but I think it would be nice just to have that option.
Yeah, and that's true for us, but remember, this cascade's down past us. So like, I'm on the Economic Development Committee. One would argue there's really no reasons, you know, just managing life, it's easier to meet on Zoom. So I think while that may be our preference, we need to think about all the other boards, that, you know, they may want to meet that way, you know, and it may be easier for some, so.
And I think the technology now is so much better than 15 years ago. You know, we can almost reach out and touch, you know, the Zoom people and, you know, get a nice big picture of them. So, yeah, I think I'd like to see it on our next agenda and just get it done.
Okay.
I agree.
There's no downside to doing it now.
Right, exactly.
Worst case, we have to amend it if something else comes out, but I'd rather amend them.
But it's a policy, so we can amend that just as easy. Okay.
So what is, did everybody get a feel for this? Does anybody have a firm feeling of which way they'd rather go?
So the biggest decision, for me, it seems to be A or C. And the difference between the two is C, we don't meet the week of Thanksgiving, but we still do meet the week of Christmas. So I'm almost more apt to just go with A, and it's every other week. It doesn't, it happens to not hit any school vacations, which I have, you know, I kind of do like to check out those weeks just to spend time with the family. But A seems to.
Yeah, I agree.
And we can always, like, if anything crazy ever happened, we could always amend this, right?
Yeah.
It's not like it's.
We can have an extra meeting, we can change the meeting, we could.
Change any week you want.
Just keep in mind that the school committee has decided that they'd like to keep meeting in this room, and so they'll be meeting the alternate Tuesdays that we are meeting. So any extra meetings that we add, we'd have to figure out with them, and they're waiting on this schedule for, to make their plans for this room as well. So we just have to, if we add an extra meeting, we need to have to do it another night or do it via Zoom.
So they used to meet on Mondays, so now they're moving to Tuesdays?
Yes, because there's three other boards that meet rotating on Mondays at different times. And Wednesday's.
They're out of the high school.
And Thursdays have EDC and other implementing meetings. So Tuesday opposite of us was the best, tried to do it during the pandemic, and it continues to do that. Unless we ask other boards to move around, which they can establish for that for, I don't know how long, so.
I think that's almost more the reason, just go every other week, how the meeting calendar just falls.
Yep.
Rather than switch them around personally.
I think A is the way to go too.
It does leave them with both school vacations, but that just is the way it falls, and I guess they can, you know, move those weeks if they have to.
A does make us meet the week of Thanksgiving and the week of Christmas.
Yeah, C made us meet the week of Christmas anyway, too, so.
We always have the ability to cancel a meeting if you don't want to.
We've done that in the past, especially in the summertime.
August, where we have three, like, I don't know that we need three in August.
Well, here's the thing, the neat thing about that now is that now that we've done the annual license with Gillette, you don't have to meet every single meeting during, and a lot of boards will meet once a month instead of twice, once every two weeks. In summer months, for that reason. But listen, it's your call. It's your call.
Well, if we, you know, adopt one that is just going every other, like A, and, you know, I remember since I've been on the board, there was, I think it was last summer, I think Doc, there was just nothing.
Nothing, we canceled one.
Canceled one, and I'm sure whoever, whoever is the chair this year would have the ability to do that too.
Absolutely.
I think knowing that school committee is going to be on every other, it's all the more reason to just keep it.
So do we have to vote on it or just, yeah? So I'm agreeing. Everybody okay with A?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve version A of the proposed Board of Selectmen meeting dates for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any other tidbit from Selectmen's update? Seth, just so you know, this is where you can talk about anything you want to talk about.
Oh, great.
An event we may have missed that you want to shout out, or your son graduating Sevierian this year.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The only thing I had in mind was my wife is just confirming that June 8th till the 11th, well, it doesn't matter, but June 8th, I'm on vacation.
Making note of that, Christina?
Which scheduled that long ago.
Well, I know Doc already welcomed you, but I want to also welcome you. I mean, Seth and I spent three and a half years on advisory committee together, and so, you know, we, you know, I'm welcoming the opportunity to work with you again, and, you know, and welcome, you know. It's.
Thank you, Stephanie, I appreciate it.
Nice to have you here.
Good to be here. Thanks a lot. It means a lot. Thank you.
Okay, now, last bit of business, board reorg. I think we'll start with the chair.
Anyone want to make a motion? I'll make a motion. I move Leah become chair for the next year.
I would second that.
Yes, thank you.
Any approval?
Yeah, I mean, you can't see my smile under my mask. I don't know if I'll be smiling, you know, a few months in, but hopefully.
We'll fix that for you, don't worry.
I would be happy and honored to accept that motion for chair.
Awesome. So Seth, why don't you?
Move to a free, one more time, move to approve Leah Gibson to be chair of the Board of Selectmen effective? Would be today?
No, next week, next board meeting. Oh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes, so prepare for the meeting.
Okay.
Tomorrow, yep.
May 12th, 2021.
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? I'll take a motion for vice chair.
I'll move to nominate Stephanie for vice chair.
I second.
Oh, thank you. I would be honored as well.
I'll smile.
All right. Since you are the, I'll make the motion. Move to approve Steph McGowan to be the vice chair of the Board of Selectmen effective May 12th, 2021.
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Awesome.
Congratulations to you both.
Yes, and.
And I love that Seth's name is automatically put in there.
Sorry, you're the lone man on the top pole, that's how it works.
It's a really, I will speak from experience that it is a great way to experience your first year on the Board of Selectmen to really follow everything.
Classic, we've all been there, done that, and.
It sounds like fun anyway.
And we're a little far apart to be able to kick you under the table when it's time to read the notices, but.
Dave Feldman, I was black and blue on the right side of my leg, I said the left of him, and.
It's a little like being in the Navy, you know, you kind of have to learn your ropes, you know, so.
Well, you know, well, he knew on election day, I just said to him, I said, you know, I said, you know, we don't know how else everything else will fall, but somebody always nominates the newbie. And it's good because Seth is, he was chair of advisory committee, so he's used to speaking. And everyone knows I'm never for a lack of words, so. But it did give, it did give you something to do. And passing down to you, I will say Christina is wonderful. You know, if you want to be like me and then Ed before me and like everything, writing, she'll do it. Or you can read it right from the computer. But, yeah, it would be great. I would like to nominate Seth to be clerk.
Second.
Awesome. Any further discussion? You have no say whether you accept it or not.
We're going to outvote you, even if you don't want it.
All those in favor?
Aye, we got to make the motion for us.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Motion to approve Seth Ferguson to be clerk for the Board of Selectmen effective May 12th, 2021.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Awesome. Great, congratulations. We have a great board next year.
And thank.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, one quick note. The question has come up several times about with, you know, some of the relaxing of. The question has come up several times about with, you know, some of the relaxing of of COVID restrictions. That does not change for for this room or for other indoor meeting rooms, so it's still ten people per thousand square feet. This is a twelve hundred square foot room, so we can have up to twelve people. So just so that people know, I think you all have heard that, but other boards and committees, they they should know that it it hasn't changed. And our Director of Public Health will keep us apprised if that does change.
Yeah, which is why we still have Zoom.
Correct.
Participation.
Correct.
And Doc, may I just thank you for your two years as Chair. It's it's a long time, and thank you for for leading the group for the last two years.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's been an interesting two years with COVID. But I pass the baton to you, Leah.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steph, last.
All right.
Act as.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good night, everybody.